The time is now six eleven and I'd like to call our Board of Library Trustees Committee of the whole meeting to order. And just for the record, this Act one oh one dash zero six four zero, which is by remote attendance and any votes, which I don't think there will be any, will be taken by roll call. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Yes, trustee Doherty?
Here.
Trustee Gigani?
Here.
Trustee Humphreys?
Here.
Trustee Kuntia?
Here.
Trustee Stapleton?
Here.
President Graber?
Here. Thank you very much, Caitlin. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Three, Public Comment. Julie, do we have any public comment?
No, we don't. President Graber, we don't have anyone else.
Thank you very much. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Four. Well, just before I go to that, I didn't see anyone of any other, there's no one on the line that's okay. Okay, we'll go on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is the Equity Diversity Inclusion Trading led by consultant Rashida Graham Washington, which I think we have her husband Darryl Washington here with us, and we're very happy you're here today.
Thank you. I'm very happy to be here. And yes, my name is Darryl Washington. In addition to having the privilege of sharing life with Rashida Graham Washington, I am also the CFO and Strategy Consultant with RGW. And I know some of you I do know, and some of you, this is my first time getting to know you and meeting you. But I am a very laid back person, but I also like to know who I'm in a room. I know you guys kind of did a roll call, but if it's okay, can we just go around and just do a quick roundup? And anybody can go first.
Start with Dave Humphreys. He's off mute.
Nate, would you like to go first?
Sure. What are you asking us to say, to do?
Just give us, just give us some, some background information on yourself that would help Darryl get a good, a better picture of the board and of you.
Well, I'm Dave Humphreys and I can't log on, so I guess I'm not very techy tonight. Although I've done it, I've done it for almost two years with a lot of other organizations. Anyway, I live in Downers Grove. I've been a member of this board for eons. And I love the library. I have lived in Downers Grove all my life. I'm, how do I tactfully put it? Fairly well connected in town, meaning I know a lot of people and I have a fair idea of the sentiments in Downers Grove. And they love the library.
It was great to meet you, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll go next if everyone can hear me okay. My name is John or Jonathan Graber. I'm the President of the Board, and I've been on the Board since, I think, two thousand and sixteen. I've lived in Downers Grove since probably two thousand and five. I actually grew up in Michigan, kind of rural Michigan, and then moved to Chicago in around nineteen ninety-nine and lived really downtown for probably, I guess, five or six years until we moved to the suburbs. I'm married and have three children. All of us use the library, use the local services that are offered in the community. All of our kids are in school locally here and love the community and just keeps getting better and better. Kim, you're up.
Sure. I'm Kim Stapleton. I was born and raised in Downers Grove, went to the school system here through high school, went away to college and then lived in the city for three years until I got married and moved back to Downers Grove. That was in two thousand and three. I work in the city for twenty-one years now in the Loop, and we have three daughters that also go to school here in the community. I think I've been on the Board for about three years. That's all.
Good to meet you, Kim.
Did you call on me? Sorry, it was kind of, okay. Hi, I'm Carissa Doherty. I think I've also been on the Board for three years or so. I don't remember. Lived in Downers Grove for something like ten year, no, twelve years or so. And I grew up in a real small town up in northern Wisconsin. And then I went to school in Madison where I was like, oh, there's bigger places with more types of people and more stuff to do. Great. And then I moved to Chicago and, and kind of like both Kim and Jonathan kind of been in the city and then moved out to the suburbs. I, we now have an eleven-year-old daughter and who goes to a local public school and we're big fans of the library, obviously, as well. I'm really excited to be here.
Bernali?
Hi, I'm Bernali Kuntia. I am not from Downers Grove or the Midwest. I'm from Charleston, South Carolina. I moved here in nineteen ninety-eight to Chicago. My background is I'm an actress, so I moved here for work. West. We've been in Downers Grove since two thousand and thirteen. And obviously love the library and I've been on the Board for a little over, it's like a year and a half, I think. I think that's right. Yeah.
Thank you. Swapna?
Hello, my name is Swapna Gigani. I've been on the Board, I believe Kim and I started at the same time in two thousand and seventeen. I have two kids, a fifth and fourth grader. I'm at home full-time now. I was born and raised in Colorado and found my way out to U of I. And after U of I, I moved and I've been very fortunate. My parents and my sister actually followed me out to the Midwest and they are also Downers Grove residents. So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Jen?
Hi, Darryl. I'm Jen Rieske. I'm the Assistant Director of the Downers Grove Public Library. I've been here for about seven years. I've been in libraries my, pretty much my entire career, so for about twenty-five years. I've got two kids who are, one just graduated high school, the other's going to be a junior, and I live in the western suburbs.
Julie?
Hi, I'm Julie Millibek. I'm the Library Director here. I've been here for almost five years. It'll be five years in August. Can you believe it? The only trustee who's been on the Board longer than I've been here is actually Dave, which is kind of a fun fact for a six-member Board. We had a lot of turnover in my first couple of years. So I've been a Library Director for over twenty-five years and all of it's been in the Chicagoland suburbs. We love it here.
And we love Julie and Jen and the rest of the staff.
I love Julie too. She's pretty cool.
I think that's everyone. If I am seeing Caitlin?
I mean, I'm Caitlin Vepelitis. I'm the Executive Assistant at the Library and the Recording Secretary for the Board. I've been at the Library for six, almost sixteen years. Was born and raised in Downers Grove. I don't live in Downers Grove currently. I wish I did. That's, we're, we're working towards that, but I have two kids and definitely visit the Downers Grove Library way more than we would our home library because it holds a very special place in my heart. So it's a great place to work and a great place to be a patron.
Great. It is great to meet all of you. Thank you so much. I have one confession, you know, because I'm dealing with Downers Grove Public Library. I grew up in Bellwood, which means my high school was Proviso West. So Downers Grove North was in our conference for all things sports, and we also played Downers Grove South. So I won't hold that against you if you promise not to hold that against me. Just like the time when you all beat us forty-four nothing, I will not hold that against you tonight. Whole other conversation. So, and then just bear with me, guys, because I am learning. Go to meeting tonight. I'm used to being on Zoom and other platforms. And so as I share my screen, just let me know if you can see, if you can't see. All right, can you all see my screen okay? Yeah, all right.
Unfortunately, I cannot, but that's not your problem.
Well, I will read.
But I will.
If you, whatever, you can't see, you can still hear. So first, I want to just kind of cover a couple introductory technical notes. And for that reason, I'm gonna, you know, just really read these out. During our time together, some things to keep in mind. To the extent possible, please keep all your cameras on. It should help us further determine the context of comments and of the conversation in general. Who is saying what is it in forms, the dialogue and conversation as well as the context. Please include your pronouns or your name tag on your account so we can refer to you most appropriately if this is something that is important to you. While this gathering is taking place on Zoom, which it is not, it is being recorded and you guys are recording. So we're gonna skip over that one because you have to record it for that one for your own reasons. Feel free to respond verbally, to write everyone in the chat or to write directly to me. I will not divulge your identity or specifically what you share with me if you write directly to me in the chat. I will try to paraphrase best I can, but still allow your voice to be on the tape in, in the conversation. If something that you want to speak to, but you don't want to be self-identified in what you're saying. Of course, please avoid writing all the random comments in the chat box during the session as it can be distracting to the facilitator. We'll be reading everything in the chat that is not anonymous feedback. We will be reading everything on the slides and verbally describing any images on the slides. The closed caption in this, in this case does not apply, but we are committed to periodic check-ins to ensure everyone's access needs, needs are being met. So for us, in RGW, music is a big part of what we do. And tonight, we're gonna start our time with listening to a song called Pan on Canvas. And some of you may have, may have heard this song before. Some of you may have heard it in one of our trainings before. But while you listen to it today and you're able to see the lyrics, I want you to reflect on what about this song resonates with you? And what things do you hear that might be helpful to you during our time together today? And to give you more context into what we're gonna be talking about today, we're gonna be talking about the context in which we learn. We're gonna be talking, and we're gonna be talking about common and shared language. So as you think about those things, right, and you hear this song, what themes do you hear during this song that may be beneficial? So I'm gonna come back and I'm gonna play this song, and the lyrics are here for you to watch. And we'll, we'll dig into a small discussion afterwards.
We are like children. We're painted on canvases, picking up shades as we go. We start off with just so brushed on by people we know. Watch your technique as you go. Step back and admire my view. Can I use the colors I choose? Do I have some say what you use? Can I get some greens and some blues? We're made by the pigment of paint that is put upon. Our stories are told by our views. Like Motley and Midden, these masters of peace and light, layers of color and time. Step back and admire my view. Can I use the colors I choose? Do I have some say what you use? Can I get some green with my blues? We're just like children. We're painted on canvases.
So before I stop sharing my screen, I want to just come back to the questions again one more time. What about this song resonates with you? And then what things do you hear that might be helpful to you during our, our, our time together today? So I want to stop sharing so that we can talk a little bit. I love that song. Let, let, and I would love to hear from you all. What, what resonated? Most lyrics and from this song, from the melodies or anything that had to do with that song?
Well, I'll jump in, I guess. It's, it's a great song. I'm not, I, I have a little problem relating it to this discussion because it, it sort of suggests to me that we are the canvas and we are painted by other people. And therefore, we are the, sort of the product of our environment. The problem I have is it doesn't seem to imply that we can, we can change the colors on the canvas ourselves. Somebody tell me I'm wrong. Go ahead.
Okay, okay. Can you hear me now? Yeah.
We, the Bernali, we don't hear you, just so you know.
Who, who, who do you not hear?
Bernali is trying to speak, but she's
Oh.
Silent. Bernali, what I did at first, I just called in and used my phone to get you that, that audio. I wanted to act crazy. While you're working on it, I want to respond to Dave. Is Dave, right?
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, and, and, and just to make sure I heard you correctly, I think I heard you say that, you know, you liked the song, but you didn't see how it was applicable.
Well, that's a bit of a simplification, but, but yeah, I, it sounds like we are the, we are like children. We're painted on canvases. And by, by the people we know. And which is true. I mean, but it implies that if we're painted on a canvas, how do we change the colors of the paint? How do we change our view, our perspective? Sounds, sounds like it's one way.
Well, no, well, I'm, I'm gonna push back and then, and just to say, like, this is part of what we will do tonight, right? We will stretch each other's thinking, and I want you all to stretch mine. I don't think it's one way, right? But I think
Good.
First, the first thing to, to sit with and understand is that, and this, and what he's, what Gregory Porter is saying is that we are the sum total of our life experiences. And people that we come and encounter with, they, that impacts the ways in which we see the world and the way we experience. But he also says, do I have some say in what you choose? Can I get some greens with my blues? But that is the very thing that you're naming, Dave. That's Gregory Porter asking for that, right, and saying like, you can't, not you personally, but in general society, you can't completely define who I am and what, what makes me who I am, right? I need to have voice and power and, 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 and agency into speaking into that as well, right? But both, but it, when you put it all together, it makes a beautiful canvas. Because we are all just children, and you know, canvases, you know? I am the so, sum total of the forty, almost forty-five years I've been on this planet. And my canvas is going to look different from every other canvas that is here, right? It's not gonna look like Jonathan's canvas that's sitting behind him right now because it's beautiful, right? Like, I love that. It's not gonna look like the canvas that's even behind me sitting right now. When you, when you look at those, even those two art pieces, Jonathan's is that he has behind him. And this Basquiat that's behind me. The, the expression that came out was based on like all of those things that led up to the point in which the, the artist composed those canvases. And they still express their power and their agency by painting the canvas. So it'll, it'll become, and, and so part of the conversation then becomes too, I guess, may, maybe today to your point is, like, what is the, what is the agency that we hold? You know, and in some cases, what power do we hold that we need to lay down? So that other ones can exercise their agency and their power. And we'll get into more of that later.
Yeah. I, I could not agree with you more. I just didn't, I didn't quite get that out of the song. I'm, I'm thinking of a canvas as something that's unchanging and doesn't speak. And, and that's just a, a different view of a canvas. So let's forget that. I just, I couldn't agree more with what you just said.
No, nothing to forget. I mean, we're all expressing our thoughts and opinions.
I thought the, the song was very much, to me, was kind of like the, the idea that you start with, like, a significant portion of who we are, or kind of, you're starting with something. And then, and then also then, and I'm noticing now this with my own kids, is how much either positively or negatively, they can be impacted by the people around them. And I think I had read, and this is out there, I think, in research studies, it's like, people are kind of the same total of the five closest people to them or something like that. And so this idea that we kind of have, like, we start with who we are and kind of those, those really early experiences. And then ultimately, you add kind of different shades as you go along. It's almost like the nature versus nurture kind of argument. And then, and then, and then ultimately, kind of where that leads, at least from my perspective and, and listening to the song, where that kind of leads me is like towards like having empathy for people because none of us know kind of like that full story that, you know, they're coming from.
Yeah, I think that's a very good point that you bring up. And I want to come back really quick to Bernali. I know she's having some sound issues. It looks like she's in on twice. So let's see if we can hear you now.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Is it echoing?
A, a little bit, but we'll, we'll make it.
I don't know. Let's watch. Let me see.
Let's just deal with the echo.
Yeah, sorry. I was just agreeing with you about telling the story and that it reminded me of like the Crayola crayons that are out now, the world ones. Because you can give them to kids now and they can color themselves the way they look. But also, I, I like that line of greens with the blues because there's joy with sadness. And I think that people want us to be one or the other, right? We need to be either always happy, or if I'm gonna tell my story, immigrant story, it needs to be sad. So I like, I appreciated that line. It resonated with me. That's all. I'm gonna turn my mic off because I can't handle this.
There was a line that I actually wrote, wrote down because I liked what it said. It was step back and admire my view. And it kind of reminded me of like a Monet where it's like up close, it doesn't really look like anything. And then we, when you look back, all the, like, the sum of all those different elements of the art are something beautiful. That's, you know, I think people try and pigeonhole individuals as, you know, you're, you're a female and that's it. You're an Asian, you know, Indian American. You're Hindu, you're this or that. And really, when you look back, you see the human that is the sum of all those things.
How much more beautiful would the world be if we stepped back and admired each other's views? I, I think that is such a profound line that you made, Swapna. Thank you for that. Absolutely.
Well, that's the one line, this is Dave again, that's the one line in the song that, that, that redeems it for me. I mean, I'm not criticizing the song. I love Gregory Porter. I mean, he's a, and now he's a phenomenal songwriter. But this line, step back and admire my view, implies that it is, that it is two-way. And so I love that line too.
Absolutely.
Outside of the song, hi, Carissa. Outside of the words of the song, I liked the imagery where they're showing all different cities, just like you are pieces from where you've come from. And I think experiences I've had in all different places in the world is, you know, makes you realize if you just live in one area, you know, there's such a big world out there. And we all pick up shades from those different stops throughout the way.
Yeah, that's a good point. You know, by the time I was twenty, I think I had lived in Texas, Chicago, Mississippi, Wisconsin, New Orleans. And probably just sprinkling a couple of places if I thought about it, right? Like, and all of those spaces were different, but they all shaped me in who I am. So like you bringing in the imagery of things, I, I really appreciate that, that you, and that's a very good topic, a good point. Carissa, I know you had something also?
Yeah, I mean, I, it's funny what Dave was saying about, you know, how the feeling that, that the song's talking about being painted on and then that you're kind of fixed in that state. I picked that up too from the song, but I also, so I'm reflecting on that because I, this weekend, returned back home to the small town where I grew up. Which is a very different place from Downers Grove. And I was reflecting on, you know, in certain places and in certain lives and in certain ways people live, you don't get to choose. You don't have as much agency over how people paint you. And that it's a privilege that I, to some extent, did or do have that opportunity. And not everyone has that same privilege. And not everyone has that same privilege for, you know, for various reasons. Um, and so thinking about what it what it is that does shape us and how how much agency we actually do have um in any of that. It's that that's kind of what I was thinking, so very similar to Dave, but but a slightly different uh slightly different angle there.
Now, based on what you're saying, Chrisa, and what Dave was saying earlier, I just want to give us something to think about, like, even with the canvas. Even though the the song doesn't name it, who says we can't repaint our canvas? I I can literally take a canvas that's in my house right now. I can cover all that up and start off fresh. I can paint over the parts that I don't like, you know, and do something fresh there. Or I could take the things that maybe don't look quite right with me, and I can do something, I can really make it fun. Right? Whatever whatever appeals to me, right? And I can, and and there's so many different ways I can do that, right? So to the to the point that you guys are making, I would ask you all to hold that. Right? Even though Greg reporter doesn't name that specifically in the song, right? Um, hold on to the fact that the canvas is not finite, even though sometimes maybe we think it is. And I got and I got a couple, we had a couple of them in this house that I I've seen it happen to, like, kids with canvases. And the stage two has become beautiful. What else resonated with you guys? Okay, so what from the song? Are there any themes or any lessons that you feel like from the song that you can take into our the rest of our time tonight? Together. And just as a reminder, we're gonna talk about the context in which we learn. We're gonna talk about uh common shared language. And the one I did not name earlier, we're gonna talk about the four quadrants of racism. So while thinking about the themes of this song, are there any, is there anything you feel like you can take with you into this lesson and our time together?
One kind of silly thing that I just noted because you mentioned shared vocabulary was, you know, some of the themes that he was using from art history, like there's some terminology that if you weren't familiar with that world and you don't know what um Archibald Motley is, and you don't know what Jasso, like, that's it's gonna change the way you perceive the song. So I would imagine the way we share our language and the words that we use will also help. Uh, you know, the way we connect with each other is is important and using that, you know, vocabulary that we're all familiar with and comfortable using and understanding its meaning.
Very good. Very, thank you for that, Chrisa. That was a really good point to add. Any other things that resonate with you guys? Well, if there's nothing else, then we're gonna just jump right into the lesson. Now, this part of the lesson, I get to do a tag team, even though she's not here. She did not actually go into tag team this part of the lesson. Um, so I've got some videos to show you, so I'm gonna share my screen again. Dave, I know you can't see, but you should, you will still be able to hear, okay? And we're gonna start with the context in which we learn. And as a trainer, my goal is to have you think about the context in which you would prefer to learn and the context in which you have actually learned and to consider the distinctions between the two. Um, as a learner, you can expect to consider the different contexts in which you learn and think about the distinctions between what your ideal environment for learning would be and what your actual environment has been. And secondly, we'll consider what impact your reflections have on your expectations for a learning environment around justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion. Essential questions that I want you guys to just kind of keep at the forefront of your mind through your learning time is what is the context in which I have learned in the past? What is the context in which I have desired to learn or prefer to learn? And what are the distinctions between the two? And what would that mean in my journey towards uh learning about diversity, equity, and inclusion?
One of the goals for this class is for me to have you think about
Start this over for you. My apologies, guys. We have a little bit of a buffering issue.
Hello, friends. In this class, we're talk about the context in which we learn. One of the goals for this class is for me to have you think about the context in which you would prefer to learn and the context in which you've actually learned and what some of the distinctions are between the two. The objectives for you are to consider the different contexts in which you learn and to think about the distinctions between what your ideal environment for learning would be and what your actual environment has been over time. And how that impacts what your expectations will be for your learning environment as we think about justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion. Some essential questions are, what is the context in which I've learned in the past? What is the context in which I would name I desire or prefer to learn? What are the distinctions between the two? And what will that mean in my journey toward learning about diversity, equity, and inclusion? Shall we begin? So we all have
What about if we turn our um cameras on?
Elements condit-
It might be helpful. Um. I was just playing this video too, and I just played all the
In which we were
And we'll give this a few more seconds. If not, we'll we'll do our last
I want you to think for a couple of minutes about what is the ideal environment or landscape for learning? What do you want the place to look and feel like?
Okay, so we're gonna just stop there.
What kind of mind?
And we're just gonna dig into this lesson together. That's okay. You know, just turn our cameras back on. I like having my partner in crime with me, you know? The internet doesn't want to let let me be great tonight. So I'm I'm gonna ask you guys, um, we're gonna start this with a question. I want you to think about your optimal learning environment. Right? What you really enjoy about your learning environment, how you want that to be structured? What does that look like for you all? And I would love to hear from you all. What do you like, desire in a learning environment?
I'm not sure if it's now I'm getting some feedback. So my ideal learning environment really um, learn the most, I think, is actually you know, I I'm I could be great with kind of like group studies, and I'm really focused more on um, you know, uh, learning, you know, for purposes of college and earning things at the job and things like that. Like, I've never been one to really get a lot out of like, even, I've had some good mentors that have helped me along the way with um with uh just kind of navigating my career, but not from a perspective of like teaching me things, like technical things. I tend I tend to just enjoy learning something else, studying, digging in. That tends to my best, at least in learning those types of concepts.
Thank you, Jonathan. What about the rest of you? What is your ideal learning?
I'm visual. As I said, I saw the pictures during that song. And I, when I'm reading something, I like to underline it, um, fold over pages, mark to go back and reread it. Um, even like physically touch things, be amongst it and moving.
Swam, I saw your head nod, and is that resonate with you?
Yes, I mean, I'm very like pen to paper. I I mean, I can't even type things because it just doesn't sink into my brain. So I I just like to take, you know, bullet points and notes to um really just remember stuff and and um get back to points and stuff.
Any any other components of your learning environment that, whoa, Kim, you copious notes, copious notes. Um, any other components that Kim was, Swam, not even one if you wanted to name, like for your ideal learning environment? How about the rest of you?
So I'm also a visual learner. Um, and but I also like examples. So understanding how what we're learning gets applied, right? So not just, oh, it's the theory behind it, but how it gets applied. And then the opportunity after that, like, once it's like sunk in, to ask questions. Because there's always something that, you know, comes up, but that that isn't answered by that thing, by that, you know, the official source that you that you just require some digging deeper. So I think there's kind of, to me, it's both. I like to have the the foundation, but then also add on top of that to say, okay, what else is there?
To kind of feedback on what Chrisa said, I would say like real life examples and like story problems. Just anything that really applies principles to something I can really, you know, grasp onto.
What else we got?
I'll I'll keep in, I guess. I um, I have to take notes, but I cannot use a computer to take notes. I have to also write them. There's something about that that I can express myself better that way. But I I I need, I I think my ideal form of learning is interactive. Um, I don't learn just out of a book. I don't learn just by watching a lecture or a movie or whatever. I need something closer to what we're doing right now, which is kind of interactive in a small group where with people who are engaged and, you know, bright and inquisitive and so forth, and bounce ideas back and forth. And not so much as a, I mean, that's also a good way to create. I'm not talking about creating. I'm talking about learning. And so you need one or two leaders who are the teachers. But with a lot of questioning and answering. I think that's my ideal.
Yeah, thank you, Dave. Jan and Julie, um, want to give you guys space.
You know what? I was being reticent because it's for the board, but I'm happy to participate. Um, I learn best, I learn, I learn best by listening and then um applying what I've heard and uh like summarizing what I've learned. And that helps to reinforce what I've learned. And I also learn really well by reading and then applying what I've learned. So based on like my career, for example, um, I've had to figure out a lot of things. I've had to problem solve a lot of things. And my best, I mean, the best successes that I have that I've gotten is by reading and then by applying the philosophy or theory in real life. So um, so far, that's the best learning environment for me. And I'm I'm very much a like a, I like to learn in solitude as well. Like, I feel like so much of what I retain happens. Well, I guess that's not so true. I guess I learn well in groups as well and by conversing and um asking questions. But I guess it really depends on what I have to learn.
I'm with Swam and Kim on the uh, it it has to come out through the pen before it sticks up here. So that that is really, I like to to read through things, to get introduced to a concept and and take notes as, you know, it's being discussed because that's really what's in my mind.
Thank you all for sharing about like what type of context you like to learn in. One thing we didn't really think about is, in some, I guess, in some cases you did, what makes you comfortable? Right? What are the other forms of comfort you look for in in my, when you're learning?
Well, one level of comfort is to have the, again, I'm I'm interactive, is to have the people I'm interacting with both accept sometimes, affirm sometimes, challenge sometimes, but they have to react to me in a positive way, even if I'm wrong. That's a that's a comfort level. I have to believe that I am being listened to. And even if I'm wrong, if somebody tells me I'm wrong, that's okay if they've really listened to me and and heard what I said.
Thank you for that, Dave. And for the rest of you, in addition to that, you know, think about um what type of posture you want from an instructor? What type of learning environment when you're sitting down? What does that environment look like, right? What is the way the lessons resim it to you, you know? All of these things that can create the environment, what are those things ideally that you would like?
So when someone plays devil's advocate, that is like the best way for me to really learn, to make me think I hadn't thought of that. It might not be the most comfortable because you might not be prepared. You might feel flat-footed, but um of all my learning experiences, sometimes it's when someone confronts me with a very opposite idea of my own. And I'd say that's when I I learn the most. I don't want to be in a group that's all, yeah, yeah, you're right. And I won't learn from that. I I want um actually some of the uncomfortableness because I think that's what testing makes the most.
Thank you for that, Kim. And that actually leads to my next question. So we talked about like an ideal learning, right? I want you all to take a second. Everybody close their eyes, and I want y'all to think about, your eyes not closed, like, okay, now there we go, I can see you. Everybody think about a learning, something you learned at least five years A learning, something you learned at least five years ago. That is still with you to this day. Be anything, but something that's still with you to this day, right? At least five years ago, think about the context that you actually learned. What was that process like? What were the conditions around it? What did the learning entail? If you got something in your head, thumb up. Give me your thumb up so I can see you. All right, cool. Dave, I know. I know you're on the phone. Do you have something? Or you still need some minutes?
Not yet. I'll I'll jump in.
Okay.
Not not quite. I'm still thinking. I have trouble remembering last week, much less five years ago.
We'll we'll give you some space and let someone else jump in. For those for those of you who have thought about those learnings and giving a thumbs up. Anyone jumping and talk about that, what that learning environment was. What were the conditions around that learning?
It it so for me, I I read a lot and listen to a lot of audiobooks. And so sometimes the the greatest lessons I learn, and these are principles mostly. Are when I'm listening to an audiobook and I'm walking my dogs at night. And I'm I'm just I'm by myself and it's quiet. And so I think like looking back over the last, I don't know, even seven years. The principles that I have learned that have stuck with me that have been most profound have been on these walks. Or listening to an audiobook.
Okay. Thank you, Jan.
No, and I was gonna say, one, there was a concept that I learned maybe 20 years ago, and it was. It was very uncomfortable in that I had a professor who every class for probably 10 weeks straight. Would start with the exact same kind of like 15 minute discussion over a concept. And you just think, what, why does he keep going over this? It's like he forgot that he taught us the the material and it's. He went over and over and over and over the 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 concept, and it's something that you couldn't forget it if you wanted to. And I'll still see people from class. And we'll both like start saying the same thing, like it's like what elements constitute, you know, this, you know, this 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 issue and. We all remember it and it was not how I really liked or enjoy learning things, but it was just hammered into us over and over and over and over again.
Thank you, Jonathan.
And apparently it worked.
It did. It has nothing to do with anything that why I would need to know it, but I remember it.
Yeah.
My thought was about becoming a parent for the first time because you had no way to learn that prior. And you come home with a baby and I remember my husband and I looking at her the first day we brought her home like, so now what do we do? Captism by fire. And then you do it a second time, a third time, and it gets easier each time. And all of a sudden, you know, you've grown into it. You're a parent, but. It just kind of happens and it wasn't learning before that.
What was that fire like, yeah?
Yeah, it was a big adjustment. Like a 180. From being selfish prior and being very selfless after.
Oh, I I I really empathize with you. I. You had a couple, so I I I know what that process is like, absolutely. And I couldn't agree with you more. What else?
Just working. My my mute, my echoing. No.
No.
Mine is uncomfortable and to something Kim said, I mean, I don't like the devil's advocate idea, just because sometimes I'm like, the devil doesn't need a lawyer. But but I but I. About five or six years ago, I was having a conversation with the mentor of mine, a black woman. And I was making the very grave mistake of trying to like relate to her story. And started telling her a story about. My dad being kicked out of a bar in Kansas City in 1967. And I was, as I'm telling this story and it's coming out of my mouth, I'm realizing that I'm getting about, I'm about to say like immigrants built this country or this country is built on the back of immigrants. And it was like, it's like came out of my mouth like vomit. And I was like, did I just say that? And I. I I was so thankful that instead of hanging up the phone on me, she listened to me and we had this great conversation. But now it was such a learning experience for me to understand that. How my family came to this country and the privileges that we were given because we were able to just come to this country. Was was a huge learning experience for me and a turning point in my activism work. And so that was about five or six years ago that that. I feel like I knew, but I never had someone confront me and say, did you just hear what you said? And I needed that. I needed someone to like shake me and say, did you just hear what you said? And so that was my uh. My learning point, I think, big changing point.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
So mine is a little bit on the same vein as Barnali's, but on a much lighter note. I've spent the past, I don't know, decade or so kind of becoming a self taught baker and that's kind of another passion of mine and. You know, I remember telling my daughter, she gets very frustrated when things don't work out perfectly. And I told her. The biggest lesson I learned from baking thing is just epic failures, like literally opening the fridge and having a cake slide into my lap. And like takes a few divots. I mean, just just the most epic failures are the ones that I'm like, okay, well, now I know not to do that again, or that's why this has happened. And so. You know, similar to Barnali, it's like those mistakes and those things that you're like, oh, I should I should have known. Are are the things that really, really stick with you, I think.
Thank you for that, Swapna. And. How does how was your chocolate cake game?
It's great because there's there's coffee in it. So that's what really brings up the chocolate.
I don't believe you. I feel like you're gonna prove that. Thank you guys so much. Who else? Who else has some thoughts on this as far as? Like your conditions from like your in learning of five years or more. That's still is still resonating with you.
I feel like a lot of times where I something is really sunk in and I'd be, you know, kind of are able to recall with more detail. Something is when it's actually not a formal learning environment. So there's, you know, it's it's not a classroom. It's not a, I'm sitting here. It's it's more of, you know, there's something unique about the like the physical context. You know, there's there's more of a, it's not just the words, the the learning that's sinking in, but it's also, I can remember. The song that was playing. I can remember what was on the walls and, you know, the different people that were around. It's the it was the whole environment. And maybe that's a function of because the whatever it was I was learning was that important, that kind of all those things fixed or the opposite, that those that all those things helped fix the thing. But in any case, the things that I'm thinking about are really. This kind of an experience. It's not, it wasn't just a little, it wasn't a moment. It was the whole environment, the whole context of something unique, something different.
Yeah. Well, can I give you guys an observation?
Sure.
When I asked you, when I asked you all and you named like your ideal learning, like how you like to learn, right? You name the things that. From a space of comfort. But then when I ask you to close your eyes and think that is something you've known for at least five years, that's really stuck with you. For the you, you all named some space of discomfort in getting it. You know? What's what you all think about that?
It rings very true to me. I didn't. I didn't. Give mine, but if I did, it would have come across as it was very uncomfortable to me. And yet. I remember it clearly to this day. And in my case, it was like almost 10 years ago, but. I hadn't thought of that. But then being on being comfortable is maybe not the best way to learn. Hmm, interesting.
I mean, even if we think about to one of our oldest lessons that one you could say one lesson we we all have in common, right? Is at some point as as babies, we went from crawling and scooting on the floor to learning how to walk, right? Think about how many times we fell down when we were learning. But then over time, it became second nature. You know, think about the time when you, you know, whatever your your Achilles heel would have been in school, whatever that subject was, right? But you stuck with it. For some of us, it may have been math, right? In algebra or geometry or calculus. Or, you know, for some of us, may it may have been some form of science or English, like like just taking us back to those childhood times. Learning that thing that we were trying to master. I don't know about y'all, but wasn't fun about it. You know? And so what that says to me and what it says to us is that. Learning can be very uncomfortable, you know. I heard it once said, there's no growth in your comfort zone. You gotta step out of that space of comfort for true growth. And I hear I see some heads nodding and some, you know, some of you all standing in agreement with me. And so I bring that. In transition to how does that apply to? The rest of our time together in training, like what do you think the significance of that is of why we need to talk about the context in which we learn?
Because these should not all be comfortable conversations. That we have to get out of our comfort zone.
Yeah. You gotta stay in it too, right? And from and and that discomfort, I would say, is from from two levels, right? And in some cases, depending on the scenario, you may be wearing one hat or the other. So sometimes it may be. It may be uncomfortable. To pass a lesson and learning on to someone. Right? Then it also may become uncomfortable to receive that lesson that you're getting. In this growth process. But in both of those scenarios. You're still learning, right? You're learning how to help someone else grow or how to. Advocate and speak on behalf of these issues of of justice, diversity, equity and inclusion. And then in some cases, you may be finding out how you've been complicit. And they're probably. They're both painful to hear. And I'm speaking from experience. You know. As a black man, you know, especially as it relates to, I think, the the one that I'm being stretched the most on, like I tell you guys, like the honest truth, because I'm going to model vulnerability here. Right? Is. Toxic masculinity. Right? And so that's the biggest one that I get stretched with. And you all know who I live with. If you've ever met her, you gotta know that these are like. These things are stretched all the time, right? So I I want to say that also to stand in solidarity with you, like through this process, is that. Tonight, I'm the facilitator, but I'm also always a student. And that's the posture we have to take. And sometimes I don't want to be the student. I'm like, man, forget you. You don't know what you're talking about. Forget that. But I still find my way back to be the student. And so it is right now, looking at the time, it's a whopping 716. I'm going to have us take a brief break for about 10 minutes. And we'll come back together at 7:26 and then we will jump into how many share language. Right? Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Dave, you might just try logging off and try logging back on or Barnali too. It might work.
That's what I'm gonna try to do. I'm just gonna, because it was mine was working in the beginning.
Okay, I thought you were.
I know, I'm on my phone. I it was working in the beginning. I'm gonna just log off completely and try to log back on again. I don't know. It's it was fine. And then it just went out. I don't know what happened. So.
Yeah, well, I I, you know, I've been using GoToMeeting for two years now.
Yeah, I I don't know. I don't know what's going on. It's so bizarre.
Computer, I I only downloaded it once initially, so I'm gonna completely power off and try again.
That's what I'm gonna do too. Kim, what time did he say we're coming back? Okay, all right. Okay, I'm gonna try out. Okay, bye, bye. Okay, all right. Okay, I'm gonna try out. Okay, bye, bye.
I can't hear you. I can see you. You might have to do what Barnali was doing and call in for the audio and use your computer for the video.
See, I am I am on the phone, too. So, so, so.
Oh, Dave, if you can hear me, um, if you're gonna like maybe go to your phone for the sound, because Barnali was having trouble with that, too. If you go
I'm just gonna try it from my phone now. Can you hear me on my phone? I'll just, I don't know. I don't know.
I can hear you now.
He don't even let me in anymore.
Oh, God.
It's like, it's just, it's like you need to be admitted. I don't know. I don't know what's going on.
I I don't know if if Ed may have changed a setting before he walked away. Anyway, if you're trying to get in on your phone and like switching to phone audio instead of the computer audio, if you go to the settings, the little, you know, gear in the upper right-hand corner, um, you can turn off your computer audio and then click on the phone tab, and it'll give you the dial, the access code and your audio PIN. And if you do that, then it will connect your sound and your person, so you won't show up more than once. That's just one of those little, that's where it's hiding in GoToMeeting.
Dave, it looks like you were saying something, but you were muted unless you have your phone next to you getting it set up. No sound is coming through.
Can you hear me now?
There you are.
I'm sure it's echoing like
Oh, that's where you have to make sure the computer audio is off. So if you go to that um, that little settings gear, it should pop you up and if you're, there should be a little red. Oh, now you're we've lost you on phone and the the caller one went away.
Say something, Dave. I wanna make sure we got you before we can start it. Dave, can you hear me? Can the rest of you hear me?
Yes. I think he may be trying to call in again.
Just give him a second.
I'm here by phone, I think.
Yes, there you are again.
You.
All right, I've got the video on my computer and the audio on my phone.
Works great.
Okay, I just wanna, I just wanna point out, as we talked about the context in which we learn, that is not the ideal settings, which you learn how to get the sound.
Yeah.
This is perfect. Any, before we move on to and start digging into common and shared language, um, does anyone have any final thoughts about text or anything that maybe even bubbled up that maybe you didn't think about before? Or any kind of, any any type of final thoughts that you may have on that before we move on? Renali, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I had to get help.
Thank you. Do you refer to it as tech support? We refer to my youngest child as tech support, and he hates it.
Would would you send him over here? Daryl, to answer your question, I'm I'm I've learned that I think some of the best lessons I've learned, the best, have been the most uncomfortable situations.
Yeah. But when we when we really think about it, though, like, when we think about how we learn, right, we never think about, like, the discomfort. But then when we reflect back on what we actually learned, then that's when we can see the discomfort and what those conditions were like. You know? Um, we can think about riding a bike, you know, we can think about things on a personal level as kids, as young adults in school or in work or in any other facet of our lives. I think that that theory, so far as we've tested it, it it holds true. You know, overall. Sometimes learning stands and is fun, but for the most part, it's just it's uncomfortable. I'm gonna share my screen again here. Because we're gonna jump into developing a common and shared language. Can you guys see my screen okay? Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And just like last time, I'm going to read you may get a duplicate from Rashida going through the video as well, because we're inside a video here. That's a different one. So our goals and in this space are to equip equip you with a glossary of terms that we'll share together as as an organization or community that helps to better define some of the terms associated with diversity, equity, and inclusion. Also, to extend your thinking beyond the glossary to consider how we actually share common understanding and language. And the objectives for you as a learner uh for you to become better acclimated to terms and definitions associated with the work around diversity, equity, and inclusion, and to deepen your relationship with people who don't look and sound like you to better understand the nuances of the I terms. And a couple of questions I want you guys to be curious about through this process are um, what are some of the terms associated with the work surrounding diversity, equity, and inclusion? How can I develop a common understanding with people I work with around terms associated with equity, diversity, and inclusion? And what are the deeper works involved in developing a common and shared language beyond the glossary of terms? All right.
I'm Rashida Graham Washington, and I am with you today to talk about how to develop a common and shared language. Our goal for this class is to equip you with a glossary of terms that you will share together as an organization or community or just with yourself that helps you to better define some of the terms associated with the journey toward equity, diversity, and inclusion. Another goal that we have for today is to extend our thinking beyond just a glossary of terms in terms of how we actually share common understanding and language. Your objectives for this class is to become better acclimated to some of the terms and the definitions associated with the work surrounding equity, diversity, and inclusion, and to get curious about the work ahead of you as you imagine how to better understand how people who may not look and sound like you define terms associated with diversity, equity, and inclusion differently than you would based on the experiences that they have in their lives, and how you might become closer by way of relationship in an effort to better understand the nuances of some of these terms. Some essential questions to guide our work today is what are some of the terms associated with the work surrounding diversity, equity, and inclusion? How can I develop a common understanding with the people I work with around terms associated with equity, diversity, and inclusion? And what are the deeper works involved in better developing an understanding of common and shared language beyond just a glossary of terms? Shall we begin? All right. One of the real really important things to do together as a learning group or co-
Sorry, guys.
Word around equity, diversity, and inclusion is to
Let's see if this book, we're gonna give it a second, see if this book stops.
Develop a common understanding of the words we use as we try to make our organizations and ourselves more equitable. For example, what is equality? What is equity? How are the these two two terms different? What are the distinctions?
All right, Daryl, you're no longer sharing your screen.
I think about terms like anti-racism, racism, white supremacy, and why these
It's interesting. Soon as I stop sharing, it starts playing fine. So we're just gonna dig into the lessons without the video. So, and everything I do in my lessons, it starts with questions, you know? Um, as we talk about a comedy shared language, why do you all think that may be important to have? As a board, as a library, as a community, when you're talking about this work, why would that be important to you all, do you think? Or would it not be important?
Daryl, I didn't catch the first part of what you were saying. Are you saying why is it important to have a common or shared language?
Yes. Why do you, why do you think that would, why would that be critical, important? Or if you don't think it's important, that's fine, too. Why do you not think it's important?
I mean, I think in general, I mean, you you need to, you can't, it's like establishing, it's like the canvas you talked about, I mean, in a different context, like, you need a base upon which you can build upon, and if you can't, if the words you're using are not aligned with or the person who you're speaking with is not understanding them in the way that you meant to convey the message, I mean, nothing it you can't, nothing can be accomplished if you're not operating off of the same the same understanding of what the language means.
Yeah, that's right. And to your point, Jonathan, what if I said just equity, for example, as a term, right? And I use that word. And the way I define that versus the way you define it, what if they're completely different?
Right.
Then we're not even speaking the same language to each other. We can completely miss each other. Other thoughts about why it's important to have a common and shared language?
I think our goals, our mission, you know, just exactly what Jonathan said, when we're gonna start talking about as we start, you know, writing like the strategic plan, we need to make sure that we're speaking the same language or else our ultimate goal, our mission statement, if we're changing those kinds of we need to make sure that we're speaking the same language, or else our ultimate goal, our mission statement, if we're changing those kinds of things, have to, they have to all be on the same page about what we're doing. And if we don't, you know, if we're not using the same language, then we don't be functioning completely different, and maybe not, maybe not in agreement when we're making decisions.
If we are each a product of our environment, not of our environment, but of the people we have met and encountered and grown up with and so forth. If we have different, quite different backgrounds, different ethnicities, different races, uh, different sexual orientations, all the differences that can make up a person. If you have two different ones, it's very difficult to speak the same language because your experiences are so different. And you've got to start with a, some agreement on a common language, and I think that's what you're getting at, is to how do we find that common language? I mean, you asked what, you asked what is equity? You asked what is equity, and you said some people have different ideas of equity. And we, we equate equity and equality a lot, but they're totally different, or not totally, but they're very different. When I say equity, for example, I'm referring to fairness as much as anything, fairness, not equal necessarily. Because you and I will not be equal, and there are a lot of, a lot of differences that we're not asking necessarily for equality, but we're asking for fairness in how people are treated, and how people are listened to, and that's more equity.
Absolutely. And, and I, I wanna touch on what, what both of you guys just said and just spoke to. And first, I'll just kinda go to your point, Dave, that you're right, like, our life experiences inform our definitions of words. Right? And I'll give more examples of that in just a second, and then, Rinaldi, like, when you even spoke about the strategic plan, we have this conversation quite a bit, right, like, we talk about what these, these words are, and we're putting even into this plan. But how do we ensure that we're talking about the same thing that we're putting in the plan? If somebody's speaking to it in one of these groups, because if we're talking about, you know, if we say blue, and I'm talking, you know, navy blue, and you're talking baby blue, that, that can have ne- negative ramifications. You know, because our interpretations are different, so like, what do we mean? And so I think between the, what the two of you said, there's like two different things, there is the just literal, what do we mean when we're saying something, and making sure that when we're saying a word, we're both talking about the same thing, or at least understand that what each other is talking about, right? Then there's also the context that comes from the, our lived experience when we're using a word. Or what that word may mean to someone, right? That it may not mean to another. And being able to, how do we understand that across lived experiences is crucial as well. What, what other things resonate with you guys, I mean, when we, as we start talking about common and shared language? Like, what is the significance and why it's important for you all?
So we can communicate essentially, and share, if you're not speaking the same language, then, you know, it's, it's really impossible to share ideas. And it's really, you know, if there's no understanding, um, you're gonna be missing the mark with or, with, between individuals or groups of people. So, it's like, you know, me speaking Spanish and somebody else speaking French, um, the communication won't occur, it's gonna be stymied because, you know, um, they can't understand one another. So similarly, even in the English language, uh, the way people define terms and use language um, can be misinterpreted and misconstrued and, and not used properly. So, it's really important to get those definitions, especially as we work in the realm of EDI. Um, that we're all talking about the same things. Because as Dave said, we all come from a different background, and some of those words mean different things to each one of us.
Yeah, and so even, and to your point, Jan, what impact do you think a lack of common and shared language has on an organization, like the library, for example?
Um, I think confusion. Um, it can lead to, I mean, it, it could lead to chaos in the most desperate sense. It could lead to frustration. Um, I know, I mean, just in emailing a colleague, um, I had an example, like, just last week, where we're working on our anti-racist statements. And I, I said, well, you know, one of my examples was, well, why don't we create like a template to work from? And, you know, that might help facilitate some of this work. And my colleague was like, no, that's not a good idea, because these should all be original, and they should all be unique, and um, and I agreed with her, and she must, I didn't mean it like word for word, like create a template, I mean, I meant, like, it should have this criteria. It should have, like, our template, it should be like, you know, an introduction, an introduction to the offense. Uh, empathetic, heartfelt apology, data. Um, you know, and so I was more or less talking about elements that should be involved within the statement, and she was thinking, like, I meant, like, a, a written template. Um, so that's just an example recently of, um, miscommunication and misinterpretation of, of, of word.
Yeah, and I bet you if you had, if we gave you time, you could think of several other examples that lead to that same thing. And that, and all of it ultimately impacts the work. Absolutely. What other thoughts do you, you all have?
I think that it would slow down, oh, sorry, Krista. It would slow down the learning process, there'd be, I can give a business example, when I meet with companies in different industries, and they start using industry acronyms that I don't know. Literally, I, I lose track of the conversation, cause I'm trying to figure out what those three letters might stand for in the food and beverage industry. And my mind just could, I'm, I'm no longer listening to the conversation until I figure out what that acronym means, so. Where I've lost up learning.
Kim, that's almost exactly the type of example I was gonna give, and I'll, I'll add that, I mean, even the, the act of having the conversation to help us understand the shared language gives permission to then in the future say, oh, you know, can you use that acronym? Could you, could you remind me what that means to you? Cause so, because then it gives, you know, it gives a little, it gives all of us the ability to say, oh, can, can we just stop and like, look at that again? Um, you know, it's a kind of collective learning together. Um, and reminding us all that we, that we don't necessarily start with a shared understanding until we share. Until we actually start exchanging our different views and perspectives and places, you know, contexts that we're coming from.
Yeah, and I think it's really important to know your audience, like, that is so important when it comes to communication, so if you can think about a time where you visited a doctor's office, and they're using all the, all this terminology, not layman's terms, but all this, um, you know, very fancy terminology, and you have to ask them, you know, what does that mean, what is that, you know? They could use the term and then define the term as they're explaining what they're talking about, but some doctors do not do that. So it's frustrating, because it's like, well, you know, I, I don't have a problem asking what things mean, but some people may feel a little intimidated, might feel stupid to say, you know, well, what are you talking about, what does that mean? So.
Could I ask a question? I'm wondering if, maybe this is another conversation, and maybe I, maybe I'm off track, but what about, we've been talking about the, sort of the dictionary definitions of things, what about the emotional definitions of things? Different people reach, react differently to the same word. And I'll give a, well, uncomfortable example, when you say the word police, you get one reaction from a white woman and a different reaction from a black man. And I'm wondering if that enters into this discussion a little bit.
I would say, yeah, and I think, um, I think that statement is very similar to what you alluded to earlier, when we talk about the lived experience and what crafts, um, our interpretations. So even in the video, um, if we could have watched it, Rashida gave an example of having a conversation with her grandmother. And because of her grandmother's lived experience, her own lived experience, and certain words that she won't use with her grandmother because of that, right? Because of, like, it could be triggering for a grandmother, or the, her interpretation, those words could be different, right? Um, so, but you're absolutely right, that yes, lived experience and perception is going to also have an impact when it comes to, um, a common and shared language. So like, you have this, this literal definition, you have the experiences, right, like, you have, you, and then you have the, the new language that's being created, and sometimes it evolves every week, right? If we're honest, right, it evolves, like, language evolves all the time, so you're also keeping up with language, so you have all of that. I think you hope and manage and all of that at the same time. What do you think?
But I think going back fourteen months, the last year, we have cut. In America, there's become a, we, we're starting to use similar terms, um, and that has been helpful. Probably to a closer point than we had ever in the past.
Yeah, I think in many ways we have, right? But we've seen some definitions change. Definition of work has changed, and what work looks like has changed drastically, you know, since the start of the pandemic. And I don't know if it'll ever change back. And it's going, but I do feel like it's going to morph more, right? Because it can't be completely just staying home working. But I think some things are gonna be different, but when you say the word work, I have to go to work. Which you'd have thought about three years ago, someone saying, I wanna go to work. Versus what they'll say, you know, in three months, this point of the, starting differently. And that's just a small skill example, are there other examples you guys can think of? Alright, so my next question is, how do you begin to develop a common and shared language?
I thought I knew the answer to that, but I don't think I do anymore. Uh, uh, based on this discussion, because there's so many variables. Um, I think having the conversation be as interactive as possible and asking for feedback frequently. How do you feel about what I just said, or, or asking them to restate something, or, I, I don't know, you, you have to almost ask, because especially when you get into some of these connotations and and emotional definitions and experiential definitions, it's really difficult to know the other person's experience.
So, to your point, I'd agree with that, Dave. So what's the one way to learn about someone else's experience?
Ask. Ask.
Yeah, and I would, and, and I would stretch that from ask, yes. But to, to begin to get into a relationship with that person. This work that we're doing, I will say this now, and if I haven't named it already, at the crux of all of it, the relationship is at the center. You know, because you're right, there are so many dynamics, and they are als- always ever changing. And you don't always know. The only way to know is to be in a relationship with genuine, true, authentic relationship. The very thing that sometimes, and many times, we don't feel like we have the time to do. Because we so busy doing the stuff that really don't make a difference, if I do, if I'm honest. That is what's going to bring about the transformation. And that starts one-on-one. You know, like, even if you all notice, and I, and I didn't go deep into it. Like, at the beginning of our call, and Rinaldi and Julie have been on calls with me before, so they will attest to this. We'll have a training, the first half hour will be us just give the note, see what's going on with each other. We'll be listening to music. I got some silly iceberg, I'm learning about what toys people liked as kids and adults. Right? But we're all just building relationships, just getting to know one another. Before we get into any of this, before we start talking about strategic planning, cause that, that don't matter yet. It doesn't matter yet, until, this can't be transactional, this work cannot be transactional. You know, when I worked in sales and, you know, marketing and all of that, I tried to make it, if, un, non-transactional, but it could be, and that's cool. Cause I really wasn't concerned about the person. I was concerned about your pocketbook, and I wanted that money in your pocket, let's be honest, right, like, that's, that's telling the truth, right, we, we're probably, that's, that's what I was on, that's what I was trained to do. Well, this is hard work now. This stuff, we're talking about DEI work, this is about connection to people. And that is what's most important, and that only comes over time, across building authentic relationship and making ourselves vulnerable and being courageous in these spaces, and allowing our own canvases to be repainted by the people we get into relationship with. And then helping to repaint the canvases of those others that we're in relationship with, to create back our great reporter, you know, paint on campus conversation. That takes time. And it's only through that, where, is where you begin to understand, I think, the different languages and the different, you know, forms of common understanding, because I can give you a glossary of terms, I can move over certain terms instead of definition, but those nuances that you're speaking to, Dave, that's the only way to get there.
The other word, I can't believe it never came out, because it's in the base of everything you're saying, is trust. When we're talking about learning through uncomfortable conversations, um, or, you know, how to build this relationship to continue to learn. It, it does, trust.
Yeah. And Rinaldi, I think Rinaldi has something that no, no, nothing in the chat.
Well, but my reaction there is
Or that, that you were reacting with
I was just gonna say, there, there's, there's a big difference in relationship between someone you're working with in an, in day in and day out. A colleague, a fellow employee or something like that, or a family member or whatever, compared to somebody who walks up to the Ask Us desk at the library, a help desk, and asks a question, where do I find such and such, or how do I do this, or whatever? I mean, that's a very short time, it's hard to bu- build a relationship in thirty seconds. So there, there's two different kinds of things, and we kinda need to talk about both of them eventually.
Yeah. I mean, you, you're right, there's a difference if it's a, a one-off, or every once in a blue moon, you know, visitors to the library, but if he's a regular visitor to the library, You know, visitors to the library, but if he's a regular visitor to the library, you can build a relationship.
Oh, yeah, well, that's 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 quite different, and I agree.
And um and there are ways to, and if it's one offs. In many cases, like the types of conversation you you're having. Won't be as in depth, there'll be more surface level for the whole, right? With these things that we're talking about and having conversation and understanding, like your experience of my experience, and we're using certain language and certain things of that nature, and now you're going to react to that language, and that's going to be more of of things that would come from.
Okay, okay.
Frequent interactions, I think.
I don't want to sidetrack it.
No, no, no sidetracking at all.
That's weird. Yeah.
Yeah, that's that's the absolute we're here for, to have that conversation. So what else are we thinking about with this this conversation about uh the context in which we learn? I'm sorry, common and shared language. Well, if there's nothing else now, there are a few terms. As we talk about common and share that I I do want to share with you all. Um, as we talk, this is what we're talking about. First is diversity. Uh, the practice of or quality of having a wide range of people who are different from one another in their ethnic background, educational status, ability, age, gender, sexual orientation, economic standard, status, perspective, worldview, and or lived experience. Equity, redistribution of power, resources and access as a means to equalizing the races and leveling the playing field between historically intentionally and marginalized people groups and their white counterparts. And inclusion, space and opportunities that are accessible to historically intentionally and traditionally marginalized people groups created to meet their expressed felt needs and where they are respected and appreciated as valuable members of the group. Is, are these, when you hear these um definitions that I just shared? Um, is this when you think about those three terms, diversity, equity, and inclusion, is that what you think about in those terms?
Yes.
Is there anyone who would define any part of that differently? And this is not a trick question, it's just an authentic question I'm asking.
Yeah, no, I I think the one that um it just kind of jumped onto me a little bit is that I guess I I have viewed equity in the way that Dave had mentioned earlier, and that it's fairness, and then you can drill down into kind of what does that actually mean? But the um, the statement that said redistribution of power, that that may be where things need, but I hadn't thought of it in that context.
Yeah, and I think, good point, Jonathan, and I think what's I would agree with you guys, right, that it is fairness. But what I may define as fairness and what the next person may define as fairness are two completely different things, right? And so to me, redistribution of power is fair, somebody else may not mention, because they gotta give up some, and they don't want to, right, like. It's like, the first thing they'll say, this ain't fair.
Well, it's got to be fair, it's got to be fair to all.
Right, and it's not, and that's why equality, we don't use equality, that's why we use equity, and I'm looking at, I just look at the if we're if if we're a country of laws. And we have the whole scale, right, and justice is blind and the balance scale. The way I look at equity in its simplest form is the balancing of that scale. So in order for that scale to be balanced, because it's unbalanced when you look at it, right? In order for it to be to balance out, some got to come off one side of that scale and go to the other side in order for it to balance out. Redistribution. And that's like, for me, at the simplest way, that's how I look at it.
I like that.
And and Daryl.
It's very.
Oh, I was just gonna say, one point that's sort of interesting that is maybe sort of relates to this conversation, but um in a slightly different context, I was on a text chain today where everyone was, the people were talking about the increase in the minimum, actually not the increase in the minimum wage, but the fact that these companies are raising their um starting salaries to essentially meet kind of the demand at this point, and I and I have a um a relative who was talking about the fact that Bank of America is raising their starting salaries to at least twenty five dollars an hour by, I think, twenty twenty five. And there were some discussions of this was going to lead to inflation and sort of these other issues, and so just for fun, I looked up, you know, how much, basically how much money Bank of America makes per employee. And and you couldn't get into like the profits per employee, but the amount of revenue generally for Bank of America employees, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars per employee for a year. And so you could say from a property perspective, like the redistribution of resources at least among workers and you know, I I'm just thinking that from my perspective and kind of what I do, that's where kind of the, you know, this this is, you know, that I was thinking of it in that context of like the redistribution. Um, you know, so I just thought that was an interesting uh statistic that I had uh seen today, and it's not something that's that's out there, I mean, you have to kind of look for this information, it's not something that's just sort of readily, you know, available.
Yeah, absolutely, you gotta dig for, and we we have to, I guess at some point, make peace with the fact that if we truly want equity. It it may be a little pain involved, just like we talk about the context in which we learn, right, and it's going to be some pain for some people. But that's okay, because now we're going really, like, if we're, if there's a redistribution. We can all re- also redistribute the pain. Right, because the pain has been held on one one side for far too long. Right? And and then what is real pain is what is perceived. You know, and so we need to think about that, and I mean, and to your point, Jonathan, like, what is the value of this employee versus what you're paying? And what are we really holding on to when we're not, we don't want to, you know, pay this person around? And the irony is is that there's this, there's this scarcity mindset, I think, is what it all was, and and I don't want to get so far down in the weeds and like where I think about with economics, but it's a scarcity mindset where we feel like we have to hoard it, and if we give these folks more, then it won't be enough, and the business will collapse, and that's all bull. You know, you take care of folks and they're happy. Then they're going to take care of the company and the people who take care of them, the business itself will grow. They'll also have more disposable income, which consequently, the economy will continue to grow. So, but we just, again, that's a whole other conversation for another day, right?
Can I just say one other, one other just quick observation, and one point that I really, I think, struggle with is, like, I I think it's important to 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 share a common language. The thing that that is the difficult part is the people who, like, the the words versus the actions.
Mm hmm. Mm hmm.
There's plenty of people who say things the right way, but do nothing to fulfill, you know, the points that they're, their focus is on achieving the common language and not actually achieving what the common language is ultimately designed to result in, to to achieve the results.
Why do you think that is?
I I I don't know.
Because it's hard.
Power, right, power, I mean.
It's giving up power.
And the power shift shifts, right?
It's greed is another word.
Yeah, I I would say like, it's real, and and I bet all of us know, we've all seen this, right? We've all seen, if we scroll through social media, I'm not, you know, knocking anybody. But people can be very supportive of a cause, whatever that cause may be on social media. And they will share stories and they'll make posts and will even post pictures and all of those things, right? It doesn't cost you anything. Where the rubber starts to meet the road, Jonathan, to your point, is talking about a common shared language or any of these other things, when someone who's holding some form of power has to relinquish some of that power, or the equity to actually come to fruition, that's where the problem comes. Right? And that's what we have to really center ourselves on. And I think for far too long. We've just focused on the side of the person who just needs to give up the equity, they just need to, you just need to relinquish this power, right? So that the other person can have power. What we have not done is show the person who's holding the power. What's in it for them too? It's actually beneficial for that person who's holding that power and hoarding it and let it go.
Yeah.
You know, but we don't, but we haven't had those conversations, like, we don't, not traditionally. And so and because of that, I think we'll can, until we have those conversations, we'll continue to run up into that same brick wall that you made. People are talking, saying, 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 saying. But then, when it's time, because, I mean, at the at the end of the day, we're all human, right? And if I tell, and if we're completely honest, we want to know what's in it for us. Right? It's like, it's, we want to help other people, but we also want to make sure that we're taken care of as well. So we can help people see what's in it for them as well, which there is lots of benefit, right, and we can have that conversation. Then I think you start to see a shift. And just talking about a common share language or just saying about doing some things versus actually seeing the change come about. You know, just think about the pressure of holding all that power for somebody who holds it. What does that feel like? What are your nights sleeping like? You know? Just that, like, what what are the things that you have to continue to maintain because you have this power, like, what is the, what are the fights that you kind of have? And then what is the real benefit of it? It's all imaginary. You know, but if you start to link relinquish some of that and share it, right, and some of that pressure is often, you can share the pressure and share the responsibility and share the decision making and you know, and share like all of these things, and it's not just on like you, not you, Jonathan personally, but like you, the the power hoarder, right? And whatever, in whatever realm or arena that is, right, and you're doing these things together. It becomes so much more liberating. And I think that's where the conversation needs to go. And that's where you'll start to see that change, that you're, you know, that you're naming, that you're not seeing right now. When you're seeing the 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 rubber not meeting the road. That's just my thoughts. What do y'all think?
I was just gonna say, um, um, one of the things that you were saying earlier, Daryl, about um starting relationships and that that's the root of these conversations. Even if an organization, you know, I I come from the nonprofit world, so I'm thinking from this like an organizational standpoint, even if they they start, it was a library, like, we're starting from a place of like, we we want to make a change, or it's, you know, this is something that we're interested in. It's it's not a short, it's not a short term or easy thing, it's a long process, and it's not easy, and it's it's the relationship building isn't, doesn't happen overnight, and so getting to that point, even even if, you know, if we as an organization or as a board or whatever, we're interested in, you know, like, let's do something. It's not necessarily something that we do right, like, right now, tonight, and then like, oh, yeah, we're like, okay, the E D I, we're done, it's it's no, this is a commitment, and it's something that, you know, relinquishing power is, you know, even if you could do it, like, flip a switch. It it's not going to have the same effect in terms of like building those relationships and having an ongoing conversation.
It's a journey, not a destination, right, Priscilla? And that's the beauty end of it too, when you think about it, right? Like, when you just think about, oh, one, I'm, I love a road trip, so that's probably why the reason I like this, but but when you think about it, if you're on a journey, right? Think about all the things that you learn and get to gathering, see and explore and experience along that journey, right? But then if it's just a destination, at some point, it's become, it's over. So you don't get to experience anything new because you've reached the destination. But if you're continuously journeying, you're continuously learning, you're continuously getting better, you're continuously meeting more people, you're continuously getting going deeper relationship, you're continuously finding more ways to have fun, right? And learn and stretch each other. That's a beautiful thing, you know, and it's a great thing to keep in mind through this, that where I am today, I I just want to be better tomorrow. And I want to be better the next day, and then the next day, and the next day, right, and then realizing and recognizing that some days I'm gonna mess it up, and I'm gonna slide back three days in my progress. But I can keep going, and that's a, and that's just beautiful for me, so Priscilla, thank you for naming me. You know, now, and I want to encourage all of you through this process, right, because it's uncomfortable waters sometimes, and we don't, we're not just going to get it all right. It's going to be a quest, and that's okay. But are you committed to it, is the is the is the question? Are you going to stay with it and stick with it? It's like, forget that I'm taking my ball and I'm going home, don't do that, stick with it. And and, you know, it's so fun. And, you know, y'all, y'all get to hang out with me some too, we can hang out, you know, we can have some good time, why make sure y'all have fun? That was a joke, y'all could have smiled or laughed, like. But to that point. Um, that could, like, we talked about relationship, what are some of the ways around this common and shared language, what are some ways that you all can begin to embark on this quest with each other as a board? And then with this, with the library itself? And then the community as a whole, what are some ways that you can begin to embark on this quest of common and shared language and developing relationship, like, what what are some of some ideas you guys have?
Well, we share different articles that we like, I know I've sent things to Julie and Jen around anti racism and just ways to help the conversation start flowing.
Mm hmm.
Well, and also, from my perspective, I um because obviously we have a responsibility as a board, but I feel like so many of the best ideas come kind of out of staff and kind of through the ground roots up. And so for lots of, you know, the change that we have made and continue to make. Um, you know, I think for me personally, I kind of lean on Julie and the people that are in the library on a day to day basis to see kind of how, you know, what we can do better um to move forward.
I think some of, one of the things that I've learned is that in my um developing relationships with people at the library, my colleagues as well as patrons, is that um approaching people um with an opportunity to learn something from them. And for them to be able to teach me something, whether it's from their personal experience or um or just just knowledge that they have, um but to never assume that people can't benefit you in a certain way as far as learning is concerned, so um I think just having an open posture is helpful.
Yeah, Jim, when you said that, and Dave, I see you, I'm right back to you, I I just don't want to forget this because I'm getting old, and I get, I forgive them. Um, but something you said that just really just resonated with me was, we have like, this internal mantra even in our family. Um, in Dr. King's letters from Birmingham, when he was in Birmingham jail. One, and I'm paraphrasing here, he's he spoke to, he said how all life is interconnected. And it's an inescapable web of mutuality. And I can never be fully who I ought to be until you're fully who you ought to be, and you can never be fully who. And you can never be fully who you ought to be until I'm fully who I ought to be. And that's the interconnectedness of life. That is kind of like our mantra in our family. Right? And that just really resonated with me when you spoke, where it's like, we all have something to give one another. Right? But you can never get it until you spend that time with the other person. You know, so I think that is very critical and that's very crucial, you know? And outside of your meetings, right? And I, and I understand like the volunteer, I mean, for a board, it's essentially it's a volunteer position, right? And you all have lives outside of being board members. But do you all find times to connect that, that aren't just in this space? You know? Y'all find time to get to, get at the park and just, you know, throw some hot dogs and burgers or something on the grill or some fish or something on the grill, put some music on. And just hang out and just be, bring your families. You know? What is that? It may even sound foreign to your ears right now. But think about like, if you all did things, like if you don't do it, what, how, what impact does that have on the dynamics? Like in the ways and we're talking about common and shared language, we're talking about relationship. That's a fun way to build relationship and you can do it all with, with everybody all at the same time.
Yeah.
You know? And then now what if you did it and the board sponsored it and you invited, invited the library staff? Now you can get rid, get to know some of the folks at the library. Over some fun stuff. That's the best time to get to know people, right? Does that sound crazy? Like as an idea or concept?
We've had this conversation, Daryl, you and I about, about sort of the, the rules of, of, um, I was gonna say, I don't want to say that, but the rules that are sort of in place for us as board members, like we don't know each other socially at all. We don't spend time together during our meetings. And we can't, right? So I think that, I think that, and I think I've talked about to Julie a lot about this, like getting to know the staff better. Like it, it feels like there's a big, there's like a little bit of a disconnect between that, the board and then the staff. And because of that, there is this sort of maybe lack of trust. So I think that, and I'm, I'm speaking for myself, so I'm not speaking for anyone else, but for me, I think that that's a big issue. Because then when we're trying to develop a shared language, it's hard because they each have those individuals, but not as a group. And so, and then even amongst us as board versus staff, I think that also there's like a, a, a mistrust or, or did not even, I don't know if it's distrust, but it's like, we just don't, we don't know them. We don't know what they're going to say about us and maybe staff members are afraid to say something in front of us. And I think that there's a, so that's, that's just my opinion and I'd love to hear if other board members feel the same way, but I don't know.
Yeah. And then real quick, like, well, a clear, a clarification, you said there are rules that you can't, you all can't get together like that?
Well, they open meetings at Illinois, they cannot get together and discuss library business. Now, they could get together and do something social. However, particular, the more political your town, the harder it is to do that. Because anytime they get together to do anything that might talk about the library, it has to be posted as an open meeting. So if they're doing something social, it has to be something completely social and they can't talk about the library at all.
Julie, I'll add one caveat to that. Isn't the rule, I, I could hang out with Barnali. And, and we could go have breakfast together, but I couldn't hang out with Barnali and Dave at breakfast. It's only two of.
As long, if you're talking about anything library.
Right.
It can't be more than one-on-one because this is a six-member board. And anything more than one-on-one is a majority of a quorum of the board of trustees. Now, in, I will say, in other places, boards have had like social kinds of get togethers and, and such. It, it, there is also an undercurrent of, of what's going on politically where you are and whether that is acceptable or not.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't want to extend this discussion, that, that piece of it, but politically this town, at least several years ago, before I think any of the rest of you were here, we were advised by the village attorney never to get together with more than one other member of the board because of the perception that we might be discussing library business. So we can talk about that piece another time, but the only other thing I wanted to mention related to that though, is if, if we're going to get to know another person and get to build a relationship, however quickly or for whatever purpose. A good friend of mine says, remember that you've got two ears and one mouth. You ought to listen more than you talk. And some of my friends would be surprised to hear me say that. Because I talk a lot. But if you're going to build a relationship and become, build a friendship even, you need to listen to the, what the other person is saying and ask them questions and then sit back and listen. And they need to do the same with you. Because if all you're doing is talking, you can't hear.
Yeah. Um, our, that's a big part of why our tagline is let's get curious. Dave, you're absolutely right. Um, and I won't, I won't touch the politics that are, that are down our throat. Um, but I think I'm looking at a group of what I have deemed to be very smart individuals. I think if y'all want it, y'all can figure that out. I'll just say that and leave it there. Right? Um, but you're right, we need to do, there needs to be more listening and more, I mean, it's talking. Even if you notice, I asked a lot of questions. I don't do a lot of, I do some talking and telling, I do a lot, I ask a lot of questions for clarity, so I'm curious about this and what people say. Um, but before we move on, because we have about 30 minutes left, but before we move on to our last piece, I wanted to see if there's, if there are any last thoughts on context in which we learn or common and shared language?
I just had a quick question actually. Um, so in the definitions you showed us, and I think in the past when Rashida's spoken to us, um, the, the words, um, people groups has been, has been used. And it's, it, that's one of the, it's, it's a phrase that I've not heard before. And I'm just curious kind of that choice of language. And I mean, in my mind, that just means groups of people. But you know, other folks use like community or other, you know, other phrases. Does, does that choice of language mean something? I guess maybe I'm just asking for, you know, like a shared, a shared understanding of, of people groups.
No, Chris, that's a, a, a good question. Yeah. So, uh, in short, we, we would say hit MPGs, which is historically intentionally traditionally marginalized people groups. Um, and we don't necessarily use communities, we just, we use people groups because they, they are groups of people. You know? Um, and we use hit MPGs instead of BIPOD or versus any other um, phraseology that's being used these days because this feels more inclusive. Um, because it doesn't, it also includes like the LGBTQ community, includes the homeless community, it includes, you know, all other, anyone who's been on the margin. They're inclusive in this space of the hit MPG. Where some of the other terminology may, may leave some of them still on the margin, even in the conversation.
And they are people.
Absolutely.
Individuals.
Yeah, there are people and their group, right, all together, right? So that's a, a big part of what we, you know, those who are experiencing, who experience some sort of disability, right? They're not covered in BIPOD. Either. So that's why we kind of try to use that, that. That was a great question. Any other questions, any other thoughts there? All right, I'm going to share my screen here in a second. You know what? Let's take, we don't have much time. We'll take a whopping four minutes. Right? Give my computer setup, be back in four minutes and then we're going to dump, jump into the last part, the four quadrants of racism and then Julie and Rinali and we'll let you know right now, I might, um, which I'll respond with it.
Sounds good.
Okay, four minutes, thirty-six.
All right, I'm back again if you all are back.
Barnali, you look tired.
Yeah, I am, I am. And another meeting after this meeting starts at nine thirty.
Who on earth put a meeting that's?
I'm the host. Just have to get something done. It starts at nine thirty, nine thirty-five.
Okay.
Ew.
It's just, we gotta get stuff done, so.
I've got another one too.
Ouch.
Barnali, you're not, you're not crazy. We're just not, maybe we're not mourning people, but I had a, something that had to happen today and I said, well, I, you can't be before nine thirty, so it was nine thirty.
Well, we're here with, yeah, we're here with Daryl till nine o'clock tonight. And then Rashida has her last, uh, um, meeting with the leadership team from nine to 10 tomorrow morning. So we're, we can't get enough of RGW, that's.
It just, it just keeps going. We just keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. But it helps when you're passionate about the work, so. Because we only have just a few minutes left, you know, about twenty-three minutes, twenty-five minutes. And, you know, Dave and Barnali both still have meetings for the evening. I'm going to.
Not till nine thirty. And it's another Zoom.
Possible. Right? So, um, we're going to talk about briefly the four quadrants of racism. I'm going to go over the goals and objectives. I'm going to give you a scenario that actually happened to me in my life. And I'm going to ask Julie and Rinali to kind of break down a little bit what those different four quadrants are. Um, and we're going to try to pick out what those, the areas of racism and how they fit into each quadrant in this case study I give you. And some solutions for you. Right? You ready? Let's go. Share my screen. So our goal as a trainer is to discuss and provide examples of internalized interpersonal institutional and structural racism and its impact on people and equity work. Um, as a learner, you can expect to learn how to understand the meaning of internalized interpersonal institutional instructional racial, structural racism and its impact on people and equity work. So I'm going to stop sharing for a second and I'm going to share this story with you all. I'm going to share it as fast as I can. Okay, so one of my other things that I do is I am the executive director of a very small nonprofit that focuses on homework and homelessness. And I've been with that organization for almost four years now. Well, um, one of the first things I did when I came on board was I wanted to meet all the members of the board. I talk about relationship, right? Like, so I wanted to build individual relationship with every individual member. My first meeting with one of our board members was sitting down and she says to me, and I will just say that this is a white woman in her seventies, retired in her seventies, right? And the first thing she says to me, she says, Daryl, tell me your story. This is a very normal question to ask someone, right, in the city. She's, and then, but she went a little further. She said, what I mean by that is, I mean, you understand how to run businesses and run nonprofits and you understand these things that maybe we struggle with. And you're in Chicago and the murder rates are what they are in Chicago and you, you, you are in jail and you have, I'm shooting someone and any of these things. So essentially guys, what she was asking me was like, you're a black unicorn, how did that occur? Right? This is what she asked me. What I proceeded to do was I proceeded to tell her my story, you know, just from a kid. And she was genuinely and authentically like engrossed in my story and she was trying to find the secret sauce. So she would say certain things as the conversation continued, like, oh, you had books in your home. Oh, you weren't first generation college. Oh, this was here. That didn't happen for me, right? And, but I continued to listen, I continued to share my story. I didn't get mad, the conversation didn't get heated or anything. Um, but what I did at the end, uh, kind of explained to her was hey, some of the perceptions that you have are based on, you know, she did explain to say, well, I've had very limited interaction with black men and women. And she shared what her interactions were, what she had in her experience. Anything other than those very limited experiences were based on what the media has shown and told her. And I said, you know, thank you for sharing that. And I said, you know, just like you see those depictions on the media. see those depictions on the media, other folks who look and sound like me see those other things as well." And that impacts their view in society, right? Just saying that it impacts all of us, right, what the, what the messaging is, and what we see, and what we perceive, and what our experiences are. That's the quickest way I can give you guys their story, without going into very, um, deep conversation, I saw some of the expressions on a few of your faces when I was telling you a little bit, I told you. Um, but that, that's a true authentic story. Right? But now, hold that story suspended for a second. And Julie and Bernali, since I know we've been in these conversations before, do you all feel comfortable with talking about internalized interpersonal institutional and structural racism?
Sure.
I think so.
Okay. Well, yeah.
Uh, I guess I'll start with the, um, internalized racism. Uh, this is how you interact, this is inside you, this is the things that you've internalized as a person, maybe from past relationships, the way you grew up, from, you know, the media that's constantly bombarding us, but this is, this is all about what happens inside. This is when, um, the example that, uh, we used most often, uh, where, when we were learning about this with the equity team, was about, uh, we actually had an example about hair, and where, um, someone does not see the beauty in themselves, because they have been socialized to see, you know, long, straight, beautiful blonde locks are the beauty standard, and that may not be the hair that they have. Uh, so that's the internalized racism.
Man, the interpersonal is sort of that interaction that you're having with someone else, so this was really, this one was an interesting one for us to talk about, because we talked a little bit about staff-to-staff, or colleague-to-colleague, or friend-to-friend, whatever, and sort of how those relationships work at play because of those internalized messages that we already have, that they, when you're having an interpersonal relationship with somebody, unlike the micro side. Um, and again, in our, in our situation, we're discussing staff-to-staff, that you maybe are carrying some of those preconceived notions about the other person, but all, as well as your internalized messages that you have by yourself, into that conversation as well.
And then building on that, the next step is institutional, and that's kind of that macro, more of the systematic, um, implu- or, um, implications of that racism that you've, and that is internalized and is interpersonal, um, this is where the organization has a, uh, policy or a, a workplace culture that, that reflects, uh, racism.
Yeah, and I was gonna say the same thing, there's policies, laws, it is just across the board, whether it's in an institution, or whether it's outside of, like, all of Downers Grove, or all of America, whatever it is, and that, that structure has continued and continued with them, policies and laws, and that, that message just keeps getting carried down and never changed, because it's difficult to change, we don't ever change it, that kind of, we keep.
Yeah, and that structural is when it, it becomes, you know, part of the fabric, fabric of society.
Thank you. Guys, you're incredible. So, with that explanation that Julie and Bernali gave, and the story that I just gave you guys, what do you see internal, interpersonal, institutional, and structural racism in that story?
I think I heard that woman talking at, um, like, a society level, how Julie just said structural is woven into the fabric, so she says, all she knows is really what she's seen from the news.
Yeah, I would even say yes to what you say, Cam, and even the interpersonal, it's like between the two of us, there was this inherent, for me, it was like blatant racism, and she completely was oblivious to it, like, that interpersonal, between the two of us, that she didn't even see the racism and what she was doing and saying and thinking, and feeling, being. As well. Anything else that jumps out to you guys? What about internalized?
Internalized always has to be there, every single time, it has to be there, she might not have, uh, just her own personal background, she said she didn't, um, grow up around people of different color than her skin, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, that has to play into her thoughts.
Yeah, I would, I would even say, too, like, the internalized racism, I think it's important to consider, too, because a lot of time, internalizes like you wrestling with that racism yourself, right? And you can't even bind into, in some cases, subconsciously or consciously, uh, these stereotypes and these biases that are being cast upon you, right, and what you're wrestling with. And so, if the messaging that you're receiving about what it is, and what it looks like to be a young black male, for example, in the city of Chicago, more specifically, you're receiving these internal messages, and you're wrestling with them, and how you act, I don't know. That's another space of internalized racism that we don't even name. And then how does that tie to the institutional? You know, and the structural? Do you guys think? Because where does that messaging come from?
Then she is part of this board, or this organization, that is making decisions, setting policies, hiring people, and there, and there's a whole set of us, these underlying assumptions that are being made that continue the system all the way through that structural level.
Absolutely. And then if we just take and separate racism from aside, like I said, the focus of the organization is on home and homelessness. How does that impact your decision-making for that people group, and that's a big people group that we talked about, for you guys, right? And Dave, I'm sorry, you were gonna say something?
Well, I, I was just gonna say that she she heard all of the, the, the structural and societal racism, and I don't think she really questioned it, I think she internalized it, and I don't, I'm not sure she was wrestling with it, she just accepted it.
Say more.
Well, trying to think how to, for whatever reason, I don't think she was challenging those societal assumptions. She either through lack of analysis, or, or, uh, I don't know, the way she spoke, it, she wasn't really wrestling. She was accepting the assumptions that society handed her.
Very true.
You know, and media portrays particularly, you know, city of Chicago, you know, we're here in the suburbs, we see the Chicago media happening, you know, the news is the news, and they spin things a certain way. And if you never question anything other than the headline, you don't know what all those underlying things are, and, and how much more there is to it, and, uh, it's that danger of a single story, because the only story you're being told is this one of young black men with guns in Chicago shooting people. And if you're not questioning what else is happening, or hearing any other story, then that's the only story in your head.
Yeah, and some people really exploit that story right now.
Oh, yeah.
For the last couple of years. So now, I wanna, with that question, and with that topic, I wanna flip it some way and put it back into your context, right? Where are we making these same mistakes? In the Dallas Road Public Library System? And that was real.
I think, assuming that our whole community is, um, upper-middle class, or middle class, and everyone is educated in a certain way, and everyone's desires for a library are the same, I think that's, that's a common assumption, that everyone has, um, access to a library in the same way, that everyone uses a library in the same way, I think there's a lot of, sort of, um, and everyone feels the same way about the library in general, that everybody in the community loves the library as much as we do, we all love it. But does everybody love it as much as us, does everyone think that the library should be, I mean, I think that's, those are some of the things that stand out to you.
Any other spaces where we see, as we turn this back on us, internally? Maybe we're far and short. Not too individually, but just even as a, as a whole.
Well. Well, thank you, I just heard some of my words coming back at me, and, uh, and I'm glad they did. Early in this program, I said, "I have a pretty good feeling for the how this community thinks, and they love the library," I remember saying that, and yet what I should have said is the ninety-five percent, or the ninety percent that are white, because that's what I've grown up with, that's my culture, even though I have been out of that culture many times, but when I said they love the library, I always think in grand majority terms, and to some extent, I left out the ten percent. And maybe to one more, or one degree or another, we do that in some form. Even from ten-fifty Curtis Street, because, uh, Downers Grove is ninety percent white, but it's not a hundred percent.
Absolutely.
And our staff, our staff is more than ninety percent white.
Well, that's the place where I wanted to comment, and I, you know, I don't know enough about this to, to speak, like, in an informed way, but knowing, kind of, understanding where the pipeline is for, for, for library staff, and how the, how the way our job descriptions may or may not impact the way people read them and apply, and, you know, who feels like they, they can apply, and who feel like, feels like they're, you know, would, would fit as, as a staff member of the, of the, um, library. I, I think that's, I'm, I'm sure that's something that you're all looking at, or have looked at, you know, as part of this process, but that's, that's kind of where I went, you know, that kind of hiring and assumptions about whether or not there are, you know, I forget, I forget the acronym you used before, Daryl, but people from, from those marching in people groups, yeah, um, that, that, that do wanna work at the library, and that, and that, you know, that we're putting out, the other language we use is, is language that resonates with people, and, and makes them feel like they, they are able to apply, and would fit in, you know, fit, fit in, kind of, with the culture of the library itself, that's organizational culture, I guess it's institutional, right, the, the quadrants.
Absolutely. Yeah, and that, and I think on some levels, we're still fleshing out the work of the strategic plan, but I, I, I have a feeling that's going to to be in there in some way, shape, form, or fashion. Any other, you know, thoughts about this? This is the last thing we're gonna talk about tonight, and then turn next scenario, and the different four quadrants of racism, looking at the Dallas Road Public Library, and the spaces where you all can identify.
Like, I guess what I was gonna say is more of a follow-on to what was just said, rather than looking at the four quadrants, but is in the silence, I guess I'll say it anyway, maybe it's not entirely what we are consciously doing, and the words we're putting in the job descriptions, but but the effect of it is, is that maybe, maybe the people who might change those percentages, maybe they walk into the building and look around, and develop an impression from that. And I don't know how you, this, this is more of a how-to than why, but, uh, I don't know how you change that, unless you get very proactive, and then maybe that's what we need to do.
I think the first step is create, um, a safe and welcoming environment for folks. And I think that, it's a lot of that work we accomplish, do through, uh, through the work of the strategic plan. Um, and then you gotta move from there. But Dave, I think you bring a great point. Um, really quick, before we close, because I know, again, two of you all have, I know it's not thirty minutes, but you have one more meeting for the evening, I wanna be mindful and respectful of that, and give you some kind of respect in between. But I just wanna check in, I just wanna check in with each of you to see if you had any final thoughts or questions, Swatna? Any, any final thoughts or questions, anything on your mind? If you're all good, you're all good, just give me a thumbs up. Okay? I've seen thumbs up, thumbs up, Carissa? Dante, you got anything else?
The only thing I would add is, um, I think for me, I'm, like, I want ideas for, like, how do we take this to the next place? I'm not a creative person, and so, and, and, and so I just, but it's from you and Rashida- and, and, and so I just, but it's from you and Rashida, from Julie. Like, I, I want to keep pushing these issues forward. And, and I, I'm not going to come up with a new idea, but I will be an advocate for that. You know, when our, you know, disaster.
What I would recommend is to continue this, because I believe you still all still have a another training or two as a collective, as a board, right? We'll continue to be present and know and participate in the ways in which you all have tonight with me. I love your participation. Um, and then soon there's going to be a strategic plan that's put in front of you that is dealing with these very issues, right? And that'll speak to a lot of the how. Right, on a macro level, it'll be a how. You know, you have to dig into the micro. But really getting behind and championing and supporting that, I think will be very helpful. And it's going to lay out some, a blueprint for you guys.
I'm with Jonathan. I need ideas. And I think we've got a really, you know, well, well-intentioned group of people here. And yet, speaking as one individual, my library does not look like our larger community. But it's not just the library. It's my church. It's my apartment building. It's my Rotary Club. It's all around me. And it's not overt. It, I think for the most part is not even intentional. I really need somebody to shake some sense into me to help me change some of that.
Can it speak to everyone on an individual basis?
I know, I know.
But at a micro level, I would argue that it is intentional. It's very intentional.
That's how, that's what I was about to say. It's very intentional. I mean, there's a history of Downers Grove, right? How the village was formed. The people who were able to live here, people who have to buy homes here. I mean, it is intentional. So I think it's so I, I think that it's easy to, to hope and wish that it weren't intentional, but it is. I mean, there's
Well, I don't disagree with that, believe me. But I think there is, there's at least a subgroup of people for whom it's not consciously intentional. And if given the right the right tools and the right two by four over the head or something, I think it could change.
Dave, remember, it all starts with communication and relationship building. And that's really what's at the base of all of this, is that relationship building and the way we're going to find new ways of looking at things is open and honest communication and building relationships beyond those we already have. And intentionally building relationships with those who don't look or think or behave as we do.
Hey, after, after, would you, I don't, I don't have nothing else. Julie just I think that's the, the best lesson for everybody to take from this, you know, moving to our next lesson. And patience, with being authentic in our, our journey and our walk. So I thank you guys for your participation. I thank you. I thank you for your, for your patience through the buffering. It was such a robust conversation. I hope uh, you all got something from it. I know I got something from it. I was stretched. And I feel better as, as a better person than I was, you know, three hours and six minutes ago. So I appreciate you all and I hope to see you all and talk to you all soon. Thanks, Darryl.
Thank you.
Hey, Jonathan, say we're officially adjourned.
Oh, yes. Number five, and so I will hereby adjourn the meeting. Can you hear me?